Okay, is that the extent of your testimony?
That's the extent.
Okay. Do we have any input from the board professionals?
I think it's pretty straightforward. They're trying to change the bedroom mix and we need to reevaluate the GDP and analyze it for other impacts, but these items can be waived.
Temporarily waived and then they're going to be revisited later?
The first two can be waived, the other two are temporarily waived.
So 3A and 3D are temporary and 3E and 52?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Anything else from any of the board professionals?
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if that was misstated. 3A and 3D were waived and then 3E and item 52 were temporarily waived.
Did I flip-flop that?
Possibly. I could be wrong, but apologize. I just didn't want the record to reflect anything.
Okay. So just for the record, 3A and 3D are waived, 3E and 52 are going to be revisited?
Correct.
Okay. So with no other input from the board professionals, how about the board members? Anybody have questions? Pretty easy. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
By Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion on the Global Landfill Redevelopment Plan?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. As you may recall, in April of this year, I was in front of the Board with an area investigation study for the global landfill site. After the Board recommended that the Council adopt the resolution to designate this area as an area in need of redevelopment, I did write a redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan was presented to the Council at the last week's meeting. And tonight, actually, the plan is here for consistency review, just to see if the plan is consistent with the master plan. And actually, early this year, I had come in front of the Planning Board with a laundry list of recommendations for the master plan because I had numerous redevelopment studies and plans in the pipeline. And I wanted to ensure that we cover and we look at different areas of the town that are eligible for redevelopment. And one of the recommendations was to look at the former landfill sites. We have two landfills. One is Summers and the other one is Global Landfill. So there was a recommendation to go the redevelopment route and investigate and then prepare a redevelopment plan. So that's, the plan is consistent with the master plan recommendations, and that's all.
The process, Mr. Chairman, is that Section 26 in the Isvalane law requires that the governing body adopt the ordinance, but if you refer back to the planning board for review and recommendation specifically for consistency with the master plan, so the action of this board would be adopting a resolution, if the board so finds.
Sorry. If the board so finds, then there would be a resolution confirming that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the master plan. And Mr. Sordillo has prepared that resolution. I don't know if the board saw it, but effectively, it indicates the planning board pursuant to 40 column 55 D dash 26 determines that the proposed ordinance and the underlying redevelopment plan are consistent with the township's master plan, last reexamined September 22, 2017, and amended April 2022. Therefore, be it resolved by the planning board of the township of Old Bridge County, Middlesex State, New Jersey, that the ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan is determined to be consistent with the master plan of the township of Old Bridge pursuant to Section 26.
Okay, so we're comfortable with that, Vina? Okay, any questions from anybody on the board? Okay, so I'll put it to a vote? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
By Mr. Palma and second by Mr. Lenning.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Vina.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have two resolutions, and the first being 88-2020P, Richard DeVivo Minor Subdivision with C Variances. And I need a motion on that? I'll move it. By Mr. Lenning and a second.
Second.
By Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Cannon?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, we move on now to completeness waivers. And the first one is 13-2022P, MBM at Old Bridge SPE Phase 1 LLC, and it's an amended general development plan. And do we have representatives?
Good evening.
Can you just?
There we go. Excuse me, sorry about that. We're here before you for four waivers with regard to an amended general development plan. And I have a memo from your planner, Ms. Sawant. There we go. Which is dated June 22. And we agree with her assessment, meaning that the item 3A, which is an environmental impact statement, and item 3D with the aquifer recharge assessment, that those items be waived. And then with regard to item 3E, which is a stormwater report, and item 52, sorry, that's a tree permit application and plan. So we're looking for waivers, but we agree that for our site plan, we will submit those items, when we're ready to submit those items.
Okay, for the site plan, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is that the extent of your testimony?
That's the extent.
Okay. Do we have any input from the board professionals?
I think it's pretty straightforward, the trying to change the bedroom mix and we need to reevaluate the GDP and analyze it for other impacts, but these items can be waived.
Temporarily waived and then they're going to be revisited later?
The first two can be waived, the other two are temporarily waived.
So 3A and 3D are temporary and 3E and 52?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Anything else from any of the board professionals?
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if that was misstated. 3A and 3D were waived and then 3E and item 52 were temporarily waived.
Did I flip-flop that?
Possibly. I could be wrong, but apologize. I just didn't want the record to reflect anything.
Okay. So just for the record, 3A and 3D are waived, 3E and 52 are going to be revisited?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so with no other input from the board professionals, how about the board members? Anybody have questions? Pretty easy. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
By Ms. Cannon? Second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Lenning.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, next is 22-2022P, EE Cruise and its major preliminary and final site plan with the C variance. Mr. Himmelman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see you. David Himmelman for the applicant. So we're here on a waiver hearing. I did get memorandum from, from Vina, which is dated the 22th of June. And I've had the opportunity to discuss the memorandum with her as well as the engineer. And generally, this is a situation where we're a tenant on this property. It's owned by DCH Honda. So for, and the applicant is proposing outdoor storage, which is technically not permitted in the zone, but we discussed it and it's going to be deemed as an accessory use to the primary use, so that's why we're here before the planning board. So for the most part, we're not really proposing any improvements of any type, so that's why there's a laundry list of waivers. I've discussed this with Vina, and as you can tell from her memorandum, she has agreed to a significant waiver of most of these items, with the exception of items 3A, 38E, 38B, 38C, 38D, 38F, and item 52. And those would be, her recommendation is a temporary waiver, in part because apparently looking at the aerial photographs, there may have been some tree removal at some point historically, not by my client, but by the owner. And so we need to investigate that and if necessary, file an application for tree removal permit and location plan. And also, there may have been some expansion of the gravel parking area where they park their vehicles in the front. So I've spoken to the owner, the representative of DCH Honda, and they're prepared to address those immediately. And if necessary, we'll deal with any potential stormwater or drainage impacts as part of technical review. But that gives an overview of why, I guess, Vina had recommended a temporary waiver of those certain items. So that's pretty much it.
Is there any evidence of when historically that happened? The tree removal and?
Not really. Somewhere between 2004, 2010. We are actually trying to find out if we have any documentation, if there were any permits issued, but we haven't found anything yet.
And I, yeah, and I did speak to the client. We did have a survey from 2010, but they have no records of a tree removal permit being filed. And there's a new management team at DCH. I mean, this may go back to 2005 or '04, we're not sure. So our engineer's going to look at aerials. I think we'll talk to Vina's office and see if we can determine. But in any event, it's most likely we're going to have to file a tree removal permit.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Again, that will be revisited?
Yes.
Later on?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that completes your testimony?
That completes my testimony and presentation, yes.
Okay. Vina, anything from you guys?
Nothing further.
Further? Okay. Anything from board members? Okay, with that, we'll put it to a vote?
I'll move it.
By Mr. Lenning?
No.
By Mr. Mimakis, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lenning?
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, first on our agenda this evening are the minutes of May 26, 2022. And if we could all rise and salute the flag, please? The Fledgled Allegiance of the United States of America, the Republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by one, prominently posting in the municipal complex, an announcement giving the date, time, location, and agenda of this meeting; two, mailing such announcements to the Home News Tribune; and three, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Chairman Marucci?
Here.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion on the Global Landfill Redevelopment Plan?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. As you may recall, in April of this year, I was in front of the Board with an area investigation study for the global landfill site. Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll see you soon.
Okay.
Stay safe.
Okay. Baller. Okay, we have two applications up this evening, and the first has been adjourned, which is forty-three dash twenty-twenty-P, Woodhaven Parcelo C Two for Major Preliminary Site Plan, and the applicant has requested an adjournment. So we're just going to move past it, and nobody's here from Woodhaven? Okay. All right. Next up is twenty-nine twenty-twenty-two P, Segma Old Bridge GC LLC for Major Preliminary and Final Subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Steve Goen from Giordano Halloran and Cecil on behalf of the applicant, Segme Old Bridge GC LLC. I think we're going to set up our exhibit. So we are here seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval. I know the board has spent a lot of time with this project. I've certainly spent a lot of time listening to the board, spent a lot of time with this project. I've been involved in the redevelopment process, negotiating the redevelopment agreement, financial agreement with the town. I work with Mark Pauli Castro, who represented the applicant at several of these hearings. So tonight, we have Mr. Gersberg, who's going to explain to you the nature of the subdivision. Tongue-Toe Lamb from Bowler Engineering is going to walk you through the proposed subdivision plan, and Kate Keller, our professional planner, will just talk about conformance with the redevelopment plan. So I'll bring up Mr. Gersberg, and he can give you his explanation.
Okay, just upfront, can we make sure any exhibits we put in, we mark them?
Yeah, why don't we mark this one first? So this will be, we're just going to call this A-one, and that's a subdivision, colorized subdivision exhibit.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
It's been a long time.
Been a while.
I hope it looks worse than it is at the hand.
No, it's worse than it looks.
Ephraim Gersberg, as you guys know, I think everyone knows on this board, I'm the owner of Twenty Twenty Acquisitions. And we're here tonight just to want to give-
We got to swear.
Sworn. And Mr. Gersberg, do you solemnly swear the testimony you give before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
And would just please state your full name, spell your last name for the record.
Ephraim Gersberg, E-F-R-E-M-G-E-R-S-Z-B-E-R-G. As indicated, I'm the owner of Twenty Twenty Acquisitions, who's developing, as you know, some warehouse projects and making some improvements, a lot of improvements into the town, including the golf course, et cetera. Today, we're here, really in a cleanup manner. As you may recall, when we did the Board of Ed project, and it was referenced along every project, the plan is to donate a piece of our property to the fire department, or the volunteer, I don't know how that works, township, or, get the gist, the non-technical thing. In order to do that, we need to subdivide the property to give them that. That's point one. The second is that, if you may recall, we are realigning Jake Brown Road, and because some of that could be in the Nike site, what we're doing is, we're giving, we're taking some of our property and putting in the right-of-way in order to delever the power of the US government, that if they say no, that there's a way to realign, and it would realign only on my property, so that is an alternative at the same time, in case they don't play ball. The third is, is that each of these buildings eventually is going to be its own, probably the wrong term, development agreement, financial pilots, that as they all get CO'd, the town starts getting ratables, instead of waiting for the whole project to be done. That was agreed upon in a very lengthy developers' agreement and financial agreement, in order to allow the town at each building to start getting ratables, as opposed to waiting for each, called project. And the fourth, as Vina has pointed out to me, is for my benefit, not the town's, and that is that JCP and L requires that each building be on its own lot in order to get service. Although that has to have a primary service, it's complicated, I'd have to own it, instead of JCP and L doing it, so we're subdividing each building onto its own lot, and, you know, conforming lots, but that is the benefit to me tonight as well. So three hopefully for the town, one for me, and together, we are all good. I'm hoping to, hoping I told my team that you guys have put in overtime beyond on me. I'm glad you, there's some smiles that you even are kicking me out, so hopefully we'll be-
Not yet.
Hopefully we'll be quick, and we'll try to let you guys, you know, not keep you too long.
Okay. We'll hopefully make this the shortest presentation on this project that you've heard. So that's all I have for-
Wouldn't take much to do that.
Yeah, no kidding. So that's all I have for Mr. Gersberg, but if the board has any questions?
Can I just ask something that has nothing to do with? It has to do with you, but not with, with the golf course? Can you put a sign up there that says, or is that the township responsible?
No, we can do that, but just tell me what it's supposed to say.
Oh, well, I don't, I don't know, with the name, because you have that old green acre sign up that's all scratched out, and people are still asking what's going on here.
Also, like, come soon, and then say what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, just something, it doesn't have to be a permanent-
Cannon, I did mention that to the mayor at one point in time, but I think you have to get together to-
I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
It's a good idea, it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, we're working-
It's a good thing, and we want to-
And I just want to point out one thing, that if you recall, someone came from the historical society, I think it was at this meeting, right?
Yep.
And talking about how we have to talk about the importance of Rose Lambertson. In fact, I think we're going to incorporate Rose Lambertson, and I want to talk to the town about it for their permission even more prominently than we thought about, including the logo being a rose and a bunch of other things. So I just wanted to let you know that, that I think we've gone, we're going to be going even farther than that gentleman even asked for, in terms of honoring Rose Lambertson in the project. It's just, it's a cool name anyway. Everyone's been talking about it, Rose Lambertson, Rose, so as much as Old Bridge is a great name, it may go after Rose Lambertson, and we'll incorporate that as well, just on the golf course issue. And just since we're here, and rumors and everything, we are flying. We are literally flying. August first, we're looking to start seeding, assuming our well is built and we're there. We've, we've graded out six holes already out of, obviously eighteen, and it's spectacular. It's way better than, it's coming out way better than I thought. I thought it'd be great, but this is like, it's pretty cool.
I have to say, I was up on one of, right off of Embor Road, and just looked out over the actual field. I feel like I'm in the mountains when I'm up there, so quiet. It's coming out spectacular.
And it's cool that when you come down to the bottom of the site, meaning, which is, which, what's the bottom road? Parsonage? Like, you then have like three holes that are through the trees, as opposed to the other ones that are up. The topo on the site is just, you don't, we're not almost doing anything. It's like, it's so naturally awesome. Just wanted to let you know. There's a little more than, there's good leading. Thank you so much, it's like perfect.
Are we going to have the open there?
Are we what?
The next open. The big golf thing.
Oh, um, it's going to be closed, but we're a little short for that. I think Bryson could probably drive every hole, so.
Got out to best page black.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll bring up Tongue-Toe Lamb. Just introduce yourself to the board first.
First name is Tongue-Toe, T-U-N-G-T-O. I'm the engineer for this project.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you give before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And again, you've already identified, can you just spell your last name for the record too, so we have that?
Last name is Lamb, L-A-M.
Thank you.
And just for the benefit of the board, can you give the board your professional qualifications?
Yes, I'm a two thousand and four graduate of Rochester Institute of Technology with a civil engineering technology degree, sorry, bachelor's science in civil engineering. I'm a PhD candidate at Rutgers for civil environmental engineering. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and several other states.
And, four accepts. And Mr. Lamb, you did prepare this exhibit that we're looking at, correct, and the subdivision plan that was submitted in support of this application?
Yes, subdivision plan was prepared by our surveyor, patrol point associate. The exhibit you have on the screen right now, label SD one, is a superimpose of that in addition to the air photo in the background, just to show existing condition, and then on top of that, we also superimposed a previously approved warehouse for both the Glenwood application and then Board of Education application. So what you see is five warehouses that were previously approved. We're looking to carve that up into five separate lots. In addition, on the north side of Jake Brown Road after the realignment, we're looking to carve out two additional lots, one for the firehouse and one for the existing cell tower to be made. With all that being done, we're also looking to extend and realign White Oak Lane to the, sorry, yes, which is to the west of the Glenwood Country Club, and that is shown in yellow. That is an application that has not been filed, that is existing gun club that's out there. So we're looking to consolidate those three lots, and then there's also, after you do the roadway realignment, there's some, you know, remainder property that remains, so we're going to tie that all together. So that's the purpose why we're here tonight.
And just for the record, there is no new construction, no new warehouses, no new approvals, it's just all realignment, and basically a paper, you know, kind of application.
Exactly, yep.
And the sizes of the warehouses have not-
Nothing's changing.
Size of warehouse, they all remain the same.
And just to confirm, all of these lots are conforming to the standards of the redevelopment plan, correct?
Correct. They're all conforming, and we received the review letter from ERI today, dated June twenty-third, and the variance number one is being eliminated based on exhibit in front of you. Mathematically, the only changes to the bulk table that's on sheet three from the cash letter is lot forty-two point twenty-one. It went from ninety-two point five-five acres to eighty-seven point eight-three acres, and then on lot forty-two point twenty-three, it went from eighty-two point one oh three acres to eighty-six point eight one nine acres, and then the variance for the front yard setback is being changed to one thousand two hundred eighty feet setback from White Oak Lane extension. So those are only the changes to the letter based on the exhibits before you.
Other than that, the letter contains basically technical comments relative to the subdivision plan, all of which we can comply with as a condition of approval if the board grants approval, correct?
Yes.
I don't really have anything else for Mr. Lamb, unless the board has questions or professionals have questions.
Okay, Vina, from you guys, have they, from a variance standpoint, or any?
So, actually, planning often frowns upon any landlocked parcel. There is municipal land use law that also does not, it does not encourage newer subdivisions to create such landlocked parcels. So this morning, I did reach out to T, and I discussed this with him, because that would be something concerning, but I think there was an easy fix to it. There was a portion that abuts White Oak Lane directly, so we recommended that we stretch lot C to White Oak Lane, so that we eliminate that variance, and we don't have to grant any variances, so. So I believe, although in the table, the memo you received, there are few to be decided items, they are all conforming, there is no variance issue, it's just that we didn't have the accurate dimensions, and T has said that before he submits the plan, the final compliance plans, he will have those numbers plugged in.
Okay, so if the board acts favorably tonight-
That's correct. That's correct. But the variance that was sought has been eliminated, so I don't have any further concerns.
So that was the only concern, was the landlock situation?
That's true. That's true.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Regarding roads, so the road network didn't change at all? Are the roads realigned at all to?
So, the applicant is, is adjusting the Jake Brown Road alignment to give them the ability of having Jake Brown Road actually on their property, carved off of their property, so that they don't have to necessarily pursue right-of-way from the federal government on the Nike site, in order to get to the intersection of White Oak and Jake Brown. So that is shown on this plan, as far as the actual subdivision goes, yes. So there is, there's a slight adjustment in the alignment of Jake Brown Road.
Okay, but their access to the roadways as a-
No. The overall layout is the same. It's almost an imperceptible, well, it's perceptible when you look at it, but the general layout is exactly the same. Jake Brown Road goes to White Oak. White Oak basically goes around to the existing White Oak Lane. It's, so the layout is exactly the same, it's just shifted over, so that it doesn't have to encroach onto the Nike site.
How far does it shift over?
I think, was it about fifty feet, T?
Yes.
And actually, we have verified that that really does not impact or trigger any new variances, so it also does not trigger an amended site plan, so we should be able to review it and administratively approve that change.
Okay, and that, that move, the realignment of the road, can be achieved here on a township level, and does not have to include federal government?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
This change actually makes it so that the federal government doesn't have to be involved.
And we have reached out, we have reached out to the federal government, we had a meeting with them, expressing our interest in having the right-of-way there, because that would be a through connection to Brown Town, and the initial response was pretty positive. They have indicated that they want to visit the site along with us. That should happen in the coming weeks, so I would be able to give you a feedback once I have more concrete information.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Lauer?
Yes, Mr. Lamb, could you tell me the size of the fire, property going to the fire department? An acreage?
Four point three-five acres.
Four, okay, four point three-five. Will, will the cell tower share the property with the-
No, it'll be a separate lot. The cell tower would be four point oh seven acres. It'll be adjacent here, so on that exhibit in red, it is the firehouse lot, and then in gray is the cell tower lot. We ran out of colors.
So that triangular piece is the-
Firehouse, yes.
And again, for the record, the cell tower is existing.
Yes, existing cell tower, we're just carving out and staying along the lot for it.
Thank you.
T, I do have a question about, one thing that maybe we didn't get into in our letters, the firehouse lot, did, did you look at the suitability or the feasibility of fitting a firehouse on that, on that lot? I mean, we didn't want you to do a whole site plan, but that's from a buildable area standpoint.
Yes, we looked at it from a feasibility standpoint, we were told to program an eight-thousand square foot building, so that's what-
So it will fit an eight-thousand-square-foot firehouse, and parking, and turnaround, and all that?
Exactly. The exact demand will have to work out at some point, so.
Any environmental issues on that lot? Any wetlands or?
There's some wetlands, yes, and they'll be reflected on the final plans. That was one of the comments from Rakesh.
And still with that, with that delineation, it will still accept an eight-thousand-square-foot building? Wow.
Can I just ask, I don't know if this is relevant in the series, but the business about trying to at some point connect up to a board and town, is that on some kind of a track that there it's being pursued, or, I mean, I know that there was money set aside to if the township has to, I just wondered, in terms of the environment, all the other issues involved with it, is that something that we're moving along on, or is that just best go until the actual construction starts, or?
So, and I'm sure there's quite a few people in this room that can add to that conversation. I guess I'll start. The, that is on the, on the books, as far as working towards that, that extension of the roadway, it's in the redevelopment agreement, and it requires, there are certain milestones that the applicant has to meet, and that will compel them to, to construct those improvements. If they're unable to do that, they are required to post certain monies to permit the township to pursue the permitting and the construction of the roadway. of the roadway, it's in the redevelopment agreement, uh, and it requires, there, there are certain milestones that the applicant has to meet, and that will compel them to, to, uh, construct those improvements. If they're unable to do that, they are required to post certain monies to permit the township to pursue the permitting and the construction of the roadway.
Just for the record, I'm gonna bring Mr. Gersberg back so he can add to that conversation too.
Ms. Cannon, I think also your question is really is more than just the money, is it gonna happen?
Yeah. In my lifetime, probably not.
Yes, no, definitely in your life. Um, and the answer is yes. Uh, the township, to their credit, has, is a lot of stakeholders who, in order to get out there, they've actually had discussions with every single one of them. I think the Nike's gonna be, I think, the hardest, um, and that's why what we're doing is having the first discussion about what we call public good, and that is getting this road out to their property, which every property owner knows it's good to get a, a non-paved, non-road into a road. That's gonna open up the discussion for the next part, which is, um, potential purchase of the entire Nike site so we don't have to worry about them, or, and which I've, just so you know, I've committed confidentially because we don't want Nike to know, the government, US government to know, I've committed some money toward?
With their phones.
Yeah. Uh, I've committed some money toward helping them out on that. And, uh, second is just to see if we can get some easements. Um, in terms of what you are, were referencing, uh, it is an extensive and a massive project to get all the wetlands and all the constraints on there, it is not a simple, it's massive. I think Ulbridge must have the record of wetlands in this state. And so that is working, and at the same time, we're working, I would say we're farther along and pursuing, not harder, but more diligently, the White Oak Lane extension, and we're doing those two things at the same time. But this is something that, I get bills every month from Bowler on that separate matter number. So it's, I hope, they better be charging me for something they're doing.
All right, I thought my mic was off.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure it's very much still on the horizon.
Very much.
Anything else from the board members?
I have one question.
Okay, Mr. Lanning?
The cell tower lot, who does that belong to?
It now belongs to me.
Okay.
Uh, I just purchased it, but I, I also wanna comment on the fire department, if you have any questions on?
Well, that's, I just wanted to know who was gonna?
It belongs to me, it's the gray square underneath the red. Um, and in terms of the red, we were asked to donate an acre, so it's for, full disclosure, someone mentioned it, it's not all usable, but we have, we got the parameters as T said, and it definitely fits the firehouse. And, and the reason it's four acres is for a lot of reasons, but one of them is because there is, um, wetlands on the site, but they have more than to use them.
Two questions. One, um, can anybody tell me how the fire department, when it's built and operational, will service them? Do they have to come out onto nine to get back into the facility? Is there a back entrance that they can come in?
For the warehouse?
To service the warehouse, God forbid.
To the firehouse.
Firehouse, servicing any incidents inside the park.
The board of bed, they don't have to leave?
No.
Uh, because it's literally across the street, and everyone else would come down. Again, if White Oak Lane is eventually built, they can go White Oak, or they can go Route nine to Fairway, it's less than, as you know, it's, you know as well as anyone.
Um, second one is, I could take this offline with Vina about the Nike base, I researched it many years ago, there's a deed that we have, I may even have it in my office, we'll look, we'll look at that offline.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to get it, it's very important to, to note that we would prefer to be, the original construction and the, as you mentioned, the plan, the question was whether this changed and how much it changed. The original plan was to have, I believe, roughly, I don't know, say 100%, 50% on my s, my property and 50% on, on the Nike site, the road. So let's say halfway down the middle. Um, and now what we've given a flexibility is to move it, shift it all onto my property in order to just make sure that we control our own destiny, we being? The township and, uh, the township and, and us together.
So that six acres that's back there that's township owned at one point, in the very beginning, I looked into it, the Nike base, and there is a deed, and I believe we'll discuss it offline.
I just wanted to chime in one thing with the firehouse, um, I just wanted to refresh the board's memory. When, uh, the board approved the Oaks 1 GDP, um, Brunetti was required to dedicate one acre for the firehouse. And just maybe a couple of years back, uh, the fire chief had reached out to me, asking me, what is the underlying zoning and what are the setbacks, what can I put in there? Turns out that that piece was practically not developable. It was given to the township, but you couldn't really put anything on that site. So when Segme came in, I grabbed the opportunity, because the warehousing spaces obviously needs emergency services, and I thought it would be a great location to have a firehouse there. And, um, to Effren's credit, he agreed, and that's why we have this piece. So I'm sure the fire department should be happy with this.
I'd like to clarify a little bit, just so, prior to Effren coming out, that particular six acres and that area back there was shown to other developers in the, in the course of the years gone by. Just to clarify why I was looking into the Nike base and the use of their property and how the township can utilize their property and our six acres as well. So just, um, just to clarify why I brought that up, so, that's it.
I'll point out to Vina, the other thing is, is that the benefit of the fire department is instead of being in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it's, it's on, much more accessible to everybody to be on, on Jake Brown, just logically, it worked, I think it worked out great for really everybody.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so if no other questions from the board, uh, I'm gonna open up questions for Mr. Lam from the public if anybody has any questions. Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Gersberg? Okay, so I will close the public portion for the questions. Okay, do we have any final comments from the board professionals or board members?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we're just gonna put on Kate Keller briefly, just to talk about the redevelopment plan.
Okay, very good.
Hi, everybody, Chairman, members of the board, good to be on site with you finally. Um, so yes, I'm just gonna be very brief tonight, yes.
Ms. Keller, you solemnly swear the testimony give before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full names, spell your last name for the record.
Sure, my name is Kate Keller, last name is K-E-L-L-E-R.
And, and just briefly, I know you've testified before this board before, but just your professional qualifications?
Sure, um, I'm a principal with the firm of Phillips Price Gregel Laney Hughes, based in Hoboken, New Jersey. Um, I have undergraduate and master's degrees in urban studies and planning from the University of Pennsylvania, and I've been a licensed professional planner in New Jersey for about eight years.
Accepted.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, yes, so as, um, you know, we've heard testimony tonight on this, this relatively, uh, uh, simple application in the sense that we're just coming in for subdivision, there is no proposed new development and no changes to the previously approved site plans. So I just wanted to just briefly touch on, um, how this relates back to the previous site plan approvals and how it relates back to the redevelopment plan, which is really at the crux of why all of this development has gone forward. Um, so at the beginning of tonight's hearing, Effren, Effren went over the four points as to why this subdivision tonight is being proposed. Not gonna go over each of them again, but essentially, you know, the, the ways that it benefits the township are all really ways that are going to effectuate the goals of the redevelopment plan, which essentially was to, um, you know, use these underutilized tracks and areas that were close to Route nine, provide for new uses such as warehousing and other types of light industrial spaces, and really do that in service of enhancing the economic and employment base. Um, so, with, the way that this subdivision is proposed will allow all of that to happen while, of course, um, respecting the environmental areas and completing the circulation improvements that are a key part of the approvals and the redevelopment plan. So, um, just, you know, just wanted to just briefly touch on each, all of those items, just to say that this subdivision is consistent with all of the goals of the redevelopment plan, in my opinion, and it effectuates both the redevelopment plan in general as well as the prior approvals from this board. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? You guys, Vina?
None.
Nope?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We're gonna open up, uh?
I assume we don't have any from the public?
Open up the public portion to this witness, any questions? Don't everybody jump at once? Okay, we'll close the public portion.
Thank you.
We're done, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for your time tonight, and, um, ask the board to, to vote and hopefully for an approval.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments, any closing issues? All good?
No, I'll move it.
I think Mr. Mimakis, in a second?
Second.
Mr. De Palma.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, good evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, and for the board, before adjournment, um, an issue was brought up to me by the planning department, um, for our August meeting. We are now scheduled for the final Thursday, which is the 25th of August. That's kind of a busy time of the month for everybody, there's a lot of people that are not going to be present, uh, so it was requested that the August meeting be moved to Thursday, the 11th, and I just wanted to put that out there and see? Sorry?
Of August?
August.
The 11th of August?
Yeah, from the 25th to the 11th. I'm just gonna bring it back two weeks. Does any, is that, is everybody okay with that, or does anybody have an issue with it?
I don't know if I'll be here, but, um, why are we changing it?
I believe towards the end of August, there are many people out on vacations, so I just wanna plan ahead. Uh, I know for sure I'm out, I know Nicole is out, so that's the time of the year when most people, uh?
Eric, you out? I saw you.
Yeah, I'm on vacation that week.
Nice, Eric's out, it's my son's birthday, and I'm not, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Well, you, you can, I just don't, I can't guarantee I'm gonna be here.
What date was it again?
I'm sorry?
What date was it again?
August 11th, from the 25th back to the 11th.
So it's two weeks.
It's the second Thursday of the month.
It'll be the second Thursday instead of the fourth. Oh, you're good? I'm working. Okay, so?
I mean, I'll send an official email and, uh, board members can respond, and we'll take it from there.
Do that.
Do I have a motion? No, okay.
Could I just ask if we could have, um, you know, I know maybe the summer is hard with people's schedules and stuff, but I'd like to have a master plan committee meeting? I don't even remember who else is on the master plan committee beside me.
I will look into it, and I will call you back.
Yeah, I really think we need to review and, and, you know, with all that's happening, I think we need to make sure we're on target.
I think it's a great idea because one thing with all the redevelopment studies, redevelopment plans, I know I have to update the land use element of the master plan too, but to be honest, my plate is full. But, uh, it's a good idea, I think that would be a starting point.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, you know, that we have a plan, and, and while I'm, you know, supportive of redevelopment, I don't think that development in this town should all be controlled through redevelopment. And, uh, I think we need to, you know, look at the whole, ew, look at the whole community and, uh, you know, see where we wanna go, or, you know, if we, we have changes, then maybe the way it is now is okay, but, um, I think, you know, what's being built and the requests for are just a lot different than they were even, you know, eight or 10 years ago, so.
Sure, so I'll coordinate with you and we can set up that meeting.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? Got a motion to adjourn? Final public comments? Final public comments? Do we have any final public comments? Or questions, sure?
Push it, yeah, there we go. Hi, my name is Elliot Rifkin, I'm treasurer of Whispering Pines Homeowners Association. I've been with Whispering Pines since inception, since its inception. I know Barbara very well, she remembers me. Pleasure to meet your acquaintance again. In any event, why I'm here is there seems to be, uh, this particular proposal which borders a third of Whispering Pines. That was supposed to be tonight, or was I given the wrong information?
Steve, there was one adjourned, is this what we're?
That's why I'm, the only reason I'm here. This is in reference to a tract of land that adjoins Whispering Pines. Uh, a lot of it is wetlands, a lot of it, it's off of Angela Lane. Don't ask me to go there. It's a long road.
The only other application we had was Woodhaven, which is on Texas Road and McLean Street.
Okay, so this is, I was given the wrong information?
Yeah, it's the only other application we had, that was adjourned.
Perfect. So nothing else was on your agenda?
Can I, can I?
Yeah, what, what, what tract of land is it?
It's tract of land that adjoins Whispering Pines on the east side.
Is that where, um, London and Tong is?
No, it's actually, uh, next door to London and Tong.
On the other side of it?
Other side where the forest is now. My understanding is Cavalry Church. I was given other information. Cavalry Church is wanting to build their parking lot. My voice turned on the character.
Sorry. This is a notification that's sent to property owners when, when a developer or a landowner, uh?
Right.
Deletes wetlands and then submits for an application to the DEP for letter of interpretation, so this matter isn't before the board at all currently?
Perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, so if there's nothing else from the public, we'll close the public portion. Motion for adjournment.
Move it, second.
Mr. De Palma and Mr. Lauer?
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.